Like to call the Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty Pittsburgh Commission Meeting to order. Please join me in the back seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public inputs that came in? Public inputs. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Consent agenda, is there anything that would, Commissioners would like to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove.
Good.
C.
And B, as in baby.
Okay. So the consent agenda will include A, approval of June ninth, two thousand and twenty city commission meeting minutes, and D, approval of appropriation ordinance for the period June, period ending June twenty-three, two thousand and twenty, subject to the release of HUD expenditures when funds are received. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry. Roll call vote?
Brooks?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Montel?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Going back to B, approval of ordinance number G thirteen thirteen amending subsection F of section seventy-eight thirty-three of the Pittsburgh City Code decreasing the maximum speed limit on East Atkinson Road from Michigan Street to the east city limits from thirty-five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour, and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city.
Yes, I just have one question. And in the work, it said, this was a request?
Correct.
How many, I mean, how many people does it take, or how many requests does it take to get something like this to?
The request was brought to us by the city of Frotonak. We've been working with them on trying to repave that portion. They've got the north half, a good part of it, we've got the south. This would also make it thirty each direction all the way through there, so just for consistency.
Thank you.
It was thirty one way, thirty-five the other.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Their motion to approve?
So moved.
I second it.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. C, approval of staff recommendation to enter into an engineering services agreement with Olson, Inc. of Pittsburgh in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand five hundred, in which Olson, Inc. will perform inspections and testing for the Fourteenth Street Bridge Replacement Project, and authorize the mayor and staff to sign the engineering agreement on behalf of the city.
Yeah, Cameron, I had, my question was, when I first read this construction observation, that Olson estimates the project will take a hundred and twenty calendar days, and if it exceeds the calendar days, Olson will want more money. My question is, whoever the contractor is, after a hundred and twenty days, will have something in there that if they're not completed a hundred and twenty days, they will be penalized so much a day until completion.
Right, there are liquidated damages in that contract. And again, Olson, that's, would be worst-case scenario, would be if they're out there every working day, or every calendar day, sorry. But say, in that, some of the activity we can cover with our staff, and another activity, they don't have to be there, they could do an inspection before the work is done.
Okay. And my next question was, on the cost for automobiles, personal vehicles, it says fifty-seven and a half cents a mile for a personal vehicle, and that, I believe, is Kansas law statute.
That's the standard IRS.
Right, IRS. Then suburban and pickups, they got seventy-five cents a mile.
In that same regulation, you're able to also calculate, based on your individual vehicle, which Olson has done for the pickups and SUVs in this region, that is what their IRS reimbursement rate is.
So, that was my confusion, because the beginning, on January first, two thousand and twenty, the standard mileage rates for the use of a car also includes vans, pickups, and panel trucks. But when I read further, then the taxpayer, they can decide what they want to pay.
Right, they can, they perform their own calculations and submit that, and if they get objected, they've got to be able to back that up.
And then, the next one, automobiles, Olson vehicle, eighty-five dollars a day? Why, why is that in there?
That typically doesn't apply to this contract, and talking with Olson, and say if they were to run over the mileage for that day for reimbursement, they would cap their reimbursement at that eighty-five dollars. Say that they drove two hundred miles, and had gotten excess of the eighty-five, they would cap that request at eighty-five for that day.
So eighty-five is not going to be in there, or it is?
Eighty-five would only be a maximum per day, if you will.
It's not both, it's not the mileage and the eighty-five dollars.
Correct, correct, it's one or the other. Whichever's less.
All right. I have no further questions, I move to approve.
Well, I have a question.
I do too.
This is being paid for out of the stormwater fund?
Yeah.
Correct.
Why?
Same reason that the bridge was being paid out of the stormwater funds, it addresses the stormwater issue there, there at Fourteenth Street.
Okay.
Why not capital improvements?
Because we moved to, proposed to have it take out of the stormwater for the bridge, it got approved that way, so we went ahead and planned and budgeted to go ahead and move it, move forward with the engineering out of the stormwater fund as well.
We did, we planned it out of stormwater, and we did try a couple of different options. We looked at trying to use KDOT Bridge Cost Sharing Program, and tried to even get it on their program, and shake, wipe, get rid of it, but we couldn't get accepted. So, we have tried some other funds to do it, and it was a good utilization on that. It's kind of, it's a glorified box called bridge in that, in that area, so.
Any other questions? Is the motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Moving into special presentation, five-year financial forecast. Finance Director Jamie Clarkson and Deputy Finance Director Larissa Bowman will provide information regarding the city's five-year financial forecast.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Larissa and I will give a synopsis of the five-year financial plan that was presented to y'all on working day back on May thirtieth. We're not going to read this page by page, we're just going to try to hit some of the hot points on here, and then it will be posted on the city's website tomorrow. So we're just asking, we're going to give a quick review of it, then we're just asking for you to formally accept it, and we'll put it on the website tomorrow. So with that, I'll let Larissa get us started.
Okay. So why do we do a five-year financial plan? It's to help develop strategies to achieve our goals and our objectives, and it also aligns with the Vision two thousand and thirty plan. And we also gives, allows us to analyze our revenue and expenditure trends, and project what impact current decisions we're making will affect us in the future, so.
In two thousand and nineteen, the city took in approximately thirty-five point eight million dollars. There were three major sources of revenue that brought in that money. Those were the public utility charges for service, the sales tax, and property taxes. They made up about seventy-three percent of the total. And the general fund and the utility fund are the city's two main operating funds, that's why we always look at them, see how healthy they are, because that's where all the work, most of the work gets done, is in the general fund, which is police, fire, parks and rec, and all that stuff, and then the utility fund is your water sewer, stormwater funds, and all that. The public utility has approximately eighty-five hundred residential and commercial customers, and we're projecting that's going to remain flat through two thousand and twenty-four, just because we don't, unless we get a big new industrial customer that uses a lot of water or something, we don't see that changing then. The city's sales tax is currently nine percent in the city, unless you're in a special district. Of that nine percent, six and a half percent goes to the state. This graph here is, all the orange on this, this sales tax graph on the screen is the state's portion. The county gets one percent, city gets one and a half percent of that. Of that one and a half percent, the city gets, it's all earmarked for public safety, street improvements, capital outlay, and economic development. Okay, and the sales tax, boy, this is a tough year to try to project sales tax with the COVID. Currently, we've got it down fifteen percent in the budget, we're going to propose for this year, and maybe five percent still next year. We still don't have the June numbers from the state, which would be for April, and April was a full month of, you know, closed lockdown. So, we're hoping that with the, with the new internet sales being taxed, that it'll make up for some of that, because that just started this year as well, so we'll see how that plays out. So I'm, we're projecting sales tax will be declining this year because of the COVID, and then for the years twenty-one through twenty-four, that it will return to normal levels, based upon what we know now. Turn it over to Larissa again.
Another source of revenue is our property taxes. The total mill rate for the citizens of Pittsburgh is a hundred and fifty-six mills, with approximately a third going to the county, a third to the city, and a third to USD two fifty. The city has three cost centers for the mill levy rate, that's our general fund, our debt service fund, and our public library. And there's a graph on, let's see, page. This graph shows.
If I didn't hear that one?
Yes. This graph shows that a house in Pittsburgh that's appraised at a hundred and thousand dollars generates eleven dollars and fifty cents per mill levied, while a commercial property appraised at a hundred thousand generates twenty-five dollars per mill levied. In our five-year plan, we are projecting property tax collections will relatively remain flat. In two thousand and nineteen, the city had thirty-four million in expenditures, those are broken out into five categories. Forty-five percent of that is our personnel services, which is our employees' salaries and benefits, and that's typical for our service business. Twenty-two percent of that is contractual services, those are services provided under a contract. And then we have thirteen percent in capital outlay, that's to maintain, upgrade, acquire, or repair our assets that we have. Eleven percent is debt service, that's to pay our existing debt, and then our nine percent of that is commodities, that's to operate materials, perform just our basic city services. Four programs that comprise about seventy percent of those total expenditures are the public safety, which is our police and our fire, public operations, streets, and the public utility, and we have capital outlay, which is our infrastructure, equipment, and vehicles. And our last one is the debt service, and those comprise of seventy percent of our total expenditures.
The city's health plan is a self-funded plan. The city left Blue Cross at the end of two thousand and fourteen, because it was just getting too expensive to maintain.
Fifty-four, Chuck. Thanks.
And when we, at the beginning of two thousand and fifteen, we started with a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in health fund reserves, which is way too low to be starting out, because you never know what a, a claim could come in at seventy-five thousand or something for just one claim, being self-funded. So, we switched our plan, and we have split everything out, we've got about five different carriers we use now, and right now, approximately, we've got about one point one million in health plan reserves. So, it's, it's doing well, since we've revamped how we handle all that. We'll go on to some debt service now. At the beginning of two thousand and twenty, or at the end of two thousand and nineteen, we had approximately thirty-two and a half million in outstanding debt, but of that debt, only fourteen point four million was general obligation debt. And with the state's law regarding how much you're allowed to use general obligation debt for, which is thirty percent of your assessed valuation for your city, that limit is forty-four point seven million, so you can see, at fourteen and a half million, we're way under that forty-four million dollar limit set by the state.
As for our reserves, the city has two major operating funds, the general fund and the utility fund. Best practices are to carry a sixteen percent annual expenditures in reserves, which is two months. The city's general fund met that goal in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, which was good, it kind of set us up for two thousand and twenty, when the pandemic, COVID-nineteen hit, and so we are projecting to see a little dip in two thousand and twenty in our reserves, but we will still remain at that sixteen percent level. The public utility fund has met the required reserve goal for several years, and is expected to continue meeting that goal through the end of two thousand and twenty. So our summary and recommendations, the assumptions that we made in the five-year plan are that the two thousand and twenty sales tax revenue declined fifteen percent for the two thousand and nineteen level, and in two thousand and twenty, it's going to decline a five percent from that two thousand and nineteen level. And then back for two thousand and twenty, we'll do a one percent growth from that two thousand and nineteen level, and then a two percent growth for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Assessed valuation is projected to be flat for the years two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, and then a point two five percent growth for the years two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-four. With gaming revenues from the Kansas Crossing Casino, we're projecting a decline of twenty-five percent in two thousand and nine, in two thousand and twenty, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and then return to its three hundred and fifty-five thousand annual, annually level for the years two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four. No utility rate increases in two thousand and twenty-one, and then a three percent rate increase annually for the years two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-four, and that's to offset the debt for the new wastewater treatment plant. All other revenues to project flat for minimal growth, and the city's health insurance costs will remain under the three percent annually, based on the city's last year's average, five years' average. We're expecting retirement costs for capers and KPNF to continue to rise in those years at a point two five percent level. Our workers' compensation insurance will continue to increase at a three percent annually, and electric and utility expenses will continue to rise at an average three percent annually. For property and liability insurance, it will continue to increase at an average three percent, and contractual commodity expenses are projected to increase two percent annually. So those were all the assumptions that we made when putting the plan together.
The considerations we take into account are, we adjust with news based upon historical and current trends. We monitor and control the expenditures as, as we go through the year. We maintain a structurally balanced budget. We may, try to maintain minimum reserve levels. We continue to practice long-term planning, we'll do this every year, you know, look, see what the trends are, and try to project it out, so we can see if we're going to have any issues somewhere. We make data-driven decisions. We provide programs and services guided by the IP two thousand and thirty goals.
So our recommendations, we originally planned for a one percent COLA and two percent merit, but due to the COVID-nineteen, we've, we've removed those recommendations for two thousand and twenty-one. So then, in one percent COLA for the years two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-four, and a one percent merit increase for the year two thousand and twenty-three. And there would be minimal changes to the debt service fund mill rate, we'd like to keep that between eight to ten for the years two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four, and the increased utility rates by three percent annually for the, starting in two thousand and twenty-two.
Any questions on anything we discussed?
Jamie, when you were talking about the health, health insurance, you said that we're now getting it from five different sources?
Well, it's not actually insurance from five different sources. We have, instead of just having one big blanket covering us, we've got a separate dental, we've got a separate third-party administrator that handles the claims as they come in, and then they tell us how much, they send us a report that tells what, what needs to be paid weekly. We also have what's called a staff loss coverage, that's where you buy, you buy like an insurance policy to cover your extreme claims, and those things like that.
That's not an issue, a big issue to, that's not a big issue to juggle?
Well, it's a team effort.
Okay.
I mean, between finance, HR, and the city manager, we, we, we manage it.
Okay. Well, certainly for a good, good outcome.
Well, yes, we've, we've held our employer costs and our employee costs flat for five years, and two thousand and twenty-one's, we're projecting it to stay at the same level as well, which is unheard of in the, this day and age in health insurance.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Have you, I don't even know how to ask this really, but projected, or made like a table, that if revenues come in at this point above expectations, we could go back and look at investing in personnel with the COLA? Or is it too premature?
I haven't, I haven't looked at that, I mean, that's a possibility. Right now, if, if, you know, if it comes in better than expected, it's just going, it's going to just sit in the reserves, but, you know, the manager can, can make those kind of decisions.
Now, so to answer that a little bit more detail, here's, here's what the plan is. Right now, with the way revenues sit, we've established a minimum reserve usage of about three hundred thousand, and if we can stay within three hundred thousand, then we won't go below our minimum level, which is what Larissa was referring to in the plan. That's our first option. There's several other options that were on the table if revenues get worse, so if we have another shutdown or something like that, that's where we would consider salary cuts across the board, layoffs, instead of, right now, just holding vacancies open. So it, it's kind of just a menu of items, but at this point, if things turn around, and revenues come in at, you know, much more rosier than they, than we projected them, which is hopefully the plan, yeah, we would definitely consider, A, filling vacancies, because right now, we're holding some key vacancies in police and fire across the board, and that puts a lot of pressure on the rest of our employees. So, the sooner that we can jump off of that, we will, and then, yeah, I would love to get to a point where we have enough confidence in the economy and our handling of the virus to come to you at the end of the year and say, hey, how about those raises that we took off the table in March, when this whole thing went kaput, and ask you to reconsider. So, absolutely, we're going to consider that, everything we can.
Thank you.
Jamie, could you talk about the dates that's coming up for people that might be watching at home, like July fourteenth to twenty-eighth, to July thirty-first?
Yes, yes. We'll, the manager will present the two thousand and twenty-one submitted budget to you, the city commission, on July fourteenth. You'll have two weeks to go through that, and then on, I believe it's July twenty-eighth is the next one. We'll ask you to accept that budget as presented, and then we'll have a public hearing on the first meeting in August, where we have to adopt a budget, because it has to go to the county commission, or, I'm sorry, the county clerk's office for a final legisla, or a legal thing, where they've got to, they've got to have your budget, and then they got to submit it to the state, certify it. They got to certify the budget to the state, because they, they're the ones that collect all the mill, mill levies for the taxing districts and accounting, and they have to put all that together and send it to the state. So we have to approve the budget on the second meeting in July, and adopt it, formally adopt it on the first meeting in August. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was saying, then July thirty-first, the, I guess, a public hearing, and it's published in the paper.
Right, yeah, we have to publish in the paper as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie or staff? Jamie and Larissa? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, yes.
Moving on, consider the following, A, Resolution Number twelve thirty-six, Consider Staff Recommendation to Adopt Resolution Number twelve thirty-six Determining That The City Is Considering Establishing a Rural Housing Incentive District Within the City and Adopting a Plan for the Development of Housing and Public Facilities in Such Proposed District, Establishing the Date and Time of a Public Hearing on Such Matter and Providing for the Giving of Notice of Such Public Hearing, Creekside East Phase One Rural House Incentive District.
All right. Good evening. Normally, this would be where the attorney, Garth Herman, would be here to present to you, unfortunately, with our current situation, he's unable to make it. But tonight, there, there is going to be a two-part potentially action taken, there is a resolution, as an exhibit of the resolution, as a funding agreement. So, if we get through number one, we'll move on to number two. So tonight, we're adopting a resolution to call a public hearing for this RHID project, Creekside East, that's presented to you tonight, and if we're all familiar with the RHID, it is a tax, property tax incentive to a developer to build infrastructure, and build out subdivisions and get paid back on the increased property taxes of that district. So, tonight, this is Turnkey Design Build and Turnkey Developers, with Bar Arnett, Nate Stoll, and Mindy Stoll. I presented this at Commission Workday, but just wanted to make sure that it was out in the open with everyone at home as well. So if you flip through the packet there, we can see a little closer overview of the map there, and kind of the proposed district there with the red hash marks. This is not all phase one, this is the entire, the entire development. We are only talking about phase one today, which is on page three. So in reference, you can see the, the water plant there, to the south of part of phase one, and then just to the northeast, or northwest there of Deer Run, where that ends. And if you remember Peyton's Hamlet, back, I believe, we did the resolution in February for that project, that is to the east of the lower portion of phase one here. And then just to give you a look and an idea, for those at home, of what these homes will potentially look like in this subdivision, you can get an idea there. Be a blend of looks there. So, what we need to do is adopt the resolution, and then that will, that will call the public hearing for July twenty-eighth. That is, that is part one.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Eligible cost, that is the, that's the maximum amount of money, doesn't have, they spend up to that? It's one point seven eight six?
Sure, so that is the max, they would be eligible to be reimbursed.
That's the max, okay, got it.
And, and so, so the state had changed it from fifteen years to twenty-five years, because what they were seeing is, the incentive program was great, but you would But you would almost have to build higher-priced homes to be able to get that full payback within 15 years. And so in order to build more affordable homes in RHID as well, they, they made that, that decision to extend it 25 years.
And another question I have, page 101. Right above agreements. It, it says, whereas the parties desire to enter into this agreement to provide for funding of consultants used by the city to review, evaluate, process, and inspect the project and the request, and to provide an inducement. My question is that word inducement.
That's.
What the hell does that mean?
I may defer to an attorney. That, that sounds like an attorney word.
Which, can you point me to?
Page 101? Does that help?
No, I've, I've got it pulled up, but which, which paragraph are we talking about?
The, the last whereas.
Okay.
The funding agreement? Six. Whereas six. Inducement seems, I mean, sounds to me like, we hope the heck you'll do it. But it's not a.
Yeah, I mean, the, the purpose of the, the RID is obviously.
I understand the purpose of the RID, I just don't understand what that word, where that word goes. Inducement.
What the context is in this sentence.
Am I the only one that's, that?
Yeah, it's a good question.
No, yeah.
Do we want to come back to the answer?
Well, I mean, the, you know, the, the, under this funding agreement, the developer is going to pay, he's gonna deposit $15,000 with the city. Now, he's paying those upfront.
Correct.
These are eligible costs for, for reimbursement. And so I assume that's the, the purpose for the, the use of the term inducement in that, in that paragraph.
So this is not any different than the funding agreements we've had for the previous?
No, we, we've always done this. It, you know, it, it's not, I guess, you know, these, these RIDs are to, for the benefit of the developer. And there's no reason, you know, we decided early on when we started doing these that there was, if we were gonna have to hire outside consultants to, to help us with these, with these projects, that the city taxpayer should not be on the, on the hook for those costs. And so the developer is actually putting this money into a fund that Jamie has. And then Jamie pays any expenses the city incurs out of that fund. And, and at the end, of course, any, any balance is refunded to the, the developer.
I understand all that. I, I still don't understand, and I understand what Don's saying, that I've read this 14 times under, different RIDs. I just have never questioned that word. I mean, it's, maybe it doesn't make any difference, but it was a question to me.
Well, and to, to your first point, there is no benefit if they do not build it.
Okay.
Let's do this a different way.
The agreement itself, I think the inducement is, is talking about the fact that if the developer follows through with the RID, then potentially they're able to recoup these costs, just like they are any other cost that are incurred.
Okay.
For the RID. And so there is a, I guess, the inducement is, you have the opportunity to, to get these paid back eventually. You know, provided that.
You have the opportunity to or not to?
Well, it depends.
That's what inducement says to me.
Well, inducement, I, I believe is something that, that someone. It benefits them in the long run.
It's an encouragement.
Right.
I think that to.
It's not a habit to.
In a really short way, this is an agreement and everything, and this agreement is negotiable. And so this is an inducement or an enticement to try to get them to say, look, we want you to pay for this. And so this funding agreement is basically that tool to say, look, we want you to pay for this. It's a weird word, hopefully we never see it again.
I'm sorry, are you deleting?
I obviously had too much time on my hands.
But it's an inducement for the developer to assume such costs.
Yes, we all learned something today, and it's, and the idea is we, we want the developer to do this in this agreement. It's a, it's an odd word.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yeah.
This doesn't, doesn't go before planning and zoning first and then here?
It does not have to.
Okay. On the RHID agreement, page 66, if you need to look at it, it's section two, paragraph two. I've read a lot of agreements on RHID, but I've never seen this paragraph ever before. Why was it added?
I don't have that with me. I'm pulling it up. There's page 66.
Page 66, section two, paragraph two. I've never seen it in any RHID agreement before now. Why was it added?
I believe this paragraph was added because the last RID we did, there was some communication between myself and, and the attorney that prepared it that I felt more comfortable if there wasn't language that covered, giving us the ability, and I say, uh, staff, to approve some things if they weren't technically done yet. And this, this paragraph takes care of that situation.
Most of the time, doesn't it go back through planning and zoning if there is questions concerning that? Or is this legal questions?
No, we, I don't think we've ever sent the development agreement through the, the planning and zoning.
What's gonna go to plan and zoning, development plan, the plat?
Planning and zoning is going to approve, approve the plat for Phase One.
Okay, so development plan though? And, and a plat, this is just a map right at the moment?
This, this is a preliminary plat of Phase One.
I know on page.
Preliminary meaning it's, it's just what they hope to do, it's not their final.
Well, I, I'll let them speak on, on that behalf. My conversation within this will be the preliminary and final plat.
Okay.
Going through the process right now, they have, they have filed for the P and Z meeting, which is next month to have this looked at and approved.
But this is just a map? This is not a preliminary or a final plat?
So we have submitted for a preliminary plat.
Bart, introduce yourself, would you?
My name is Bart Arnett, by the way. Good evening. We have submitted for a preliminary plat for the entire development area. But we also are trying to get the final plat for Phase One. So we go to the Planning and Zoning Committee on July 27th for approval for that.
For both parts?
Yes.
You're gonna do the final and the preliminary at the same time?
Just for Phase One.
For Phase One?
Yes.
So this isn't dissimilar than process as to what we did for Peyton's Hamlet?
Hey, Bart, I got some questions.
And I'll say, on, you know, the housing, that this, this agreement here, I know a lot of it's been hung, hung up because of COVID-19 and whatnot. So I know we're, we're, we're moving in and making sure that we, we have a lot of meetings, making sure all, all i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
All right. Phase One is 26 lots.
That's correct.
26 housing. And this is what the houses will look like?
It's a proposed look for the home, yes.
So will you be building these houses?
Yes, sir.
On the lots? Will people pick out what lot they want?
No, we're gonna build the, so the portion coming off of Freaking Highway will be spec homes. And then the six lots near Peyton, Peyton's Hamlet will be custom home build sites.
Price range on the custom build, do you have any idea?
Yes, right around 165 to 210.
And Peyton's, what, 500? Like that, four something or 350 to 450?
I think so.
Yes, so the area near Peyton's Hamlet will be, we have some agreements that there'll be certain size homes and certain price points.
Who's that agreement with?
To protect their investment.
Who's that, did you have that agreement with?
With the area, the, the previous owner of the property and the Shane Canar and his development.
How about the other houses on Deer Run? Have you spoke with any of the?
Yeah, I've worked closely with Shane, just letting him know our plan as it's developed.
Are you planning on, and I don't know, I, I know there's a push to connect neighborhoods, but I know there is some concern on the people that live south of there. And I can understand their concern and possibly reduction in their property value. But you're saying by Shane Canar's development?
Yes.
They will match his houses, which match the rest of Deer Run?
Yes.
Are you planning on connecting to Deer Run or no?
Uh, we're just going adjacent, just to the west of him. So no, his road will extend as far as it, it'll get us to our first area there.
So you won't connect it all the way to Centene?
No.
That was a question one of the residents had a concern with. But they will be the size lots of the other ones and the price of the houses in that area?
Uh, similar.
What's that mean?
That means he has four one-acre lots, we have six whatever, three-quarter lots, acre lots.
So are you mixing, mixing R1A and R1B?
No.
What are they gonna be?
It's all R1A.
It's all gonna be R1A?
So.
That's good.
I don't know if there's anyone in, that can help. You know, that's a common phrase you hear, these houses are gonna lower my property value. What's the validity of that? I mean, right now, there's no building, so I don't know if that's some discussion for a different day. I mean, that seems to me to be an easy, easy thing to say.
Well, as, as more homes are built in there, everybody's.
Come forward too, so you're in the microphone.
Nate Stoll. As more homes are built in there, the appraisal of the, the ground and the homes will increase as more homes are built. So that therefore will increase the existing homes in Porter Lane, Deer Run area.
If there's the same similar type homes in their.
Yes.
1,500 square foot home won't increase their property value? It has to match similar size?
Yes, we have, we have covenants similar to Dawn Porter's, which I've read, because we've built Mr. Wilson's house in that addition. And I've, I've read those, so we plan to follow those in that area.
What square footage were you talking about? As far as R1A?
The spec homes?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a range 1,500 to 1800.
Would be the average, yeah. And then the, the 2,000 square foot would be a minimum in the covenants down by Peyton's Hamlet.
I got you.
On that Phase One, seven.
I just want, I wanna back up what Don's saying about this development is gonna drop the price of, of, say, I live there, my home. I don't think they really have anything to base that on, that I've heard. I think it's more of a not in my backyard issue.
Well, if you're keeping it up in the R1A, it's, I don't know that it's gonna be that big of a problem when you drop to R1B or otherwise, it will.
The smaller you get the license.
Yeah. I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I mean, just for the record, Bart and Nate are very active in the community. They have spent, I don't know how many months, if not a full year. Actually, they were a couple of the people that came to us when we were looking for a developer for Silverback. And they, they hopped about a month late, and they've been very patient. But the, there is no building, residential or otherwise, in this community that we're gonna do that's gonna be at the expense of an existing property owner or a business owner. These are gonna be high-quality houses. Obviously, square foot matters, but Commissioner Brooks brings up a great point. You know, I mean, we have different types of, of zoning and requirements to determine if there was ever a need for tiny houses and where we would put them. And this is all 1A, and this is gonna be a, a great compliment. Anybody doesn't think it is, right now, the comps are afield. So when your comps are afield and somebody's building a brand-new house for up to a quarter of a million dollars, we're confident that we're not gonna be having a detrimental impact on anybody's property values, for sure.
Well, what's the, on Phase One, what's the price of the lots? Or is that included in the house that you've built?
It would be with the house.
So the lot and the house would be, what was it, 165 or?
165 to 225, be kind of the range right there.
Basically, you're not selling lots, you're just selling houses. So it's just absorbed in there somewhere.
How many spec houses?
Just so that we.
Starting, you're gonna do 20 spec houses?
Yes.
And obviously, the RHID, we, we don't really wanna sell lots, because we need to build houses to get paid back.
So once you get through planning and zoning and everything, you get rolling then?
Yes.
Not gonna wait?
We're gonna break ground right away.
So when you put the roads in, will that include the whole development? In case somebody that wants one down closer south to, so you just start at the, yeah?
Within Phase One.
Yeah.
That would be the district.
How, how long do you anticipate Phase One being?
The 20 spec homes will have complete by the end of 2021.
And if that's successful, as we know it will, we'll probably just keep, keep rolling.
And your roads will be concrete or asphalt?
Ri- right now, we have it budgeted in there, but, you know, it depends on our, our final costs.
You said you're gonna connect on Deer Run, they're.
No, they're not connected.
They're asphalt.
They're asphalt Deer Run, yeah.
Yeah.
But you're not connecting to Deer Run, I heard you say?
Well, we're tying onto his road, basically. We're not extending his.
You're talking about Canar's.
Canar, correct, yeah.
Yes.
There'd be no reason to do concrete roads, really. It'd be asphalt to make it look uniform throughout.
Yeah, we're, we're just thinking about the future maintenance for the city also.
Yeah.
With, with concrete, it'd be maybe a little bit easier, but it, it all comes down to the cost.
Well, maybe the price of oil will go up and we'll get through it.
Any other questions? All right, so seeing none, I would call for a motion to approve Resolution Number 1236.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We'll also need action on the funding agreement that was an exhibit of that resolution separately. Which is, Henry alluded to earlier, $15,000 that the developer pays the city for incurred legal, legal costs to develop this paperwork and run the process.
Page, does that start?
Where is that?
Yeah, what page?
It's in the, it's in the, the, this is really confusing. It's an attachment to the agreement that you just considered. It's the one we were reading from with, Cheryl had the question on the paragraph, or inducement.
66 or Patrick's?
But we definitely would appreciate the, both of them getting adopted individually.
So that is page 101, the funding agreement.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, this funding agreement is entered into upon approval, June 23rd, 2020, between the City of Pittsburgh and Turnkey Developments. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
I seconded.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, memorandum of understanding, Crawford County, Kansas. Consider a memorandum of understanding between Crawford County, Kansas, and the City of Pittsburgh, setting forth a collaborative effort to provide for the installation, operation, and maintenance, and a mechanism for activating the storm siren to be placed in Chicken Peak, Kansas. Hello, Matt?
Good evening, Mary, Commissioner. Real briefly, we met with the Crawford County Emergency Manager, Baker Township Fire, our police. Real briefly, we met with the Crawford County Emergency Manager, Baker Township Fire, our police staff, and we had a discussion about this incorporation. They're gonna, they're going to add a storm siren along Lone Star Road, two hundred, whatever you wanna call it, but, uh, just, just on Pesavento Corner there. And so they, they appro, the county approached us about the possibility of using our radio signal when we activate our sirens to go along with it. So we had a pretty good discussion a couple of weeks ago with all of them. Henry looked at the agreement to put together with the Crawford County Commissioners. So if you approve it tonight, whenever they get that signal active, they will be responsible for all the maintenance costs and everything like that. All it does is when we hit the button, it's down the siren, it signals the signal to their radio and the siren goes off. So we, we agreed as a staff and with them, it was a good deal. Hopefully, in the future, they'll get another one down by Cobb Lumber on Langdon Lane, which will be closer to the casino as well, and we'll probably come back and ask if they do that as well. So any questions I can answer?
It's great that we're cooperating with the Crawford County.
Yeah, we, we feel it's gonna be a good deal.
Terrific.
Any other questions? To entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Item C, professional services agreement, Earl's Engineering and Inspection. Consider staff recommendation to enter into a professional services agreement with Earl's Engineering and Inspection, Inc. of Pittsburgh, Kansas, for the preliminary and final design of the city's wastewater treatment plant, including the Sugar Creek Pump Station and Force Main.
Mayor and Commissioners, you know, the new wastewater treatment plant has been under discussion for a long time. As you probably know, our wastewater treatment plant is fifty years old. In fact, portions of it are approaching seventy years old, which really takes the plant to near the end of its useful life. On top of that, we've been informed several years ago from, that there's gonna be new regulatory limitations on the effluent that we put back into Cow Creek that are coming up, that are being put in place. Our new plant would, would struggle mightily to meet those, to meet those requirements. Finally, we've got some, we've been experiencing some growth. The current plant is very close to its capacity. If there's going to be any residential or particularly if there's going to be any industrial growth in Pittsburgh, we would need a new plant to accommodate that. All of that has led us to the point where we, we feel very strongly that we need to enter into a new wastewater treatment plant process. First step in that process is doing a preliminary engineering report. We had, we did do a preliminary engineering report in twenty eighteen. The report was done by Earl's Engineering. And we also, after that, we, we expanded that preliminary engineering report to potentially accommodate a regional reach, to reach out to other areas around Pittsburgh, to see if that would actually be a feasible thing, that would, would help reduce costs for the surrounding jurisdictions. Uh, that was, that additional work was also done by Earl's Engineering. We, once we have done that, once we've done those preliminary pieces of work, the next step in the process is to, is to enter into the design phase of, of the treatment plant. Uh, we, to do that, we selected, uh, we, we put out a request for quotations or request for quotes from qualified engineering firms. We have engineering firms that are on our on-call list, people we've worked with numerous times, we know can do the work. We meet, we work with these, with these firms regularly. We went through the process, we, we put out the request for quotations. We got three very good qualified proposals back. We reviewed all of the proposals. We had an internal group as well as an external outside industry expert with us to take a look at all of these, these proposals. We had all of the engineering firms come in and make their presentations. We had questions and answers with them. It was a very meaningful process that we went through. We learned a lot. One of the benefits of going through an RFQ process is you actually learn as a client a lot about what's going on. We took quite a bit of time just making a decision about which firm to use. And we did feel that after that process, we had a unanimous opinion that, that Earl's Engineering would be the best choice here to, to move forward with the design of our wastewater, of our new wastewater treatment plant. And right now, what's in front of you is that, is a design agreement, right? For, for the design of that wastewater treatment plant, and that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. By the way, this is a, this is a Peter Earl's who's the, you CEO?
I'm CEO.
You CEO?
She's the president.
And Patty's the president of Earl's Engineering. Obviously, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We think that the design's gonna take about eighteen months. Construction will take another two years after that. This is a long-term deal. It's one of the biggest projects, it's the biggest project I'm likely to do while I'm here in Pittsburgh. It's a, we estimate the plant to cost around a, about thirty-five million, overall cost about forty million dollars. Big, it's a big deal for us, and a major thing that we don't take lightly, it's very serious for us. You go through every piece of the contract.
Turning on page one.
It's a very long, it's a very long contract.
Could you clarify, of course, I'm on one sixty-two, just the actions. Just clarify for all of us what the conversations and or agreement and MOU with Sugar Creek and Frontenac are at this point?
I think I got the straw on this one.
And give us a little, give us a little history.
So through this process, whenever we moved into the regional plant, Sugar Creek had approached the city, started that, some of that discussion because of some of their future needs. That brought us to the table with the city of Frontenac and Sugar Creek, as we limited down on the regional plant. We've continued to have an ongoing dialogue with both Sugar Creek and the, and the city of Frontenac. And, you know, there, there are city administrators steward our plant. We've met with KDHE and some of their council members, but we've never given them a hard and fast date of you need to make a decision. And inside of the, the preliminary engineering report is some different options for them to review and consider. And I know they have their own consultant that is going through some of those options as well. So, so this memorandum of understanding is, sets basically a timetable for them to formally let us know that, that they're, want to be a part of our, of our design and process because that takes into account some of their lagoons and how that fits in. And then, of course, another, the part of the having a whole nother lift station to, to handle that capacity and demand and some of the biological needs. But basically, that, that is what that is, is designs Sugar Creek's intent for expansion, their capacity needs, as well as the city of Frontenac. And so it kinda just, it sets forth a timetable for them as well that we've never really had through this, you know, this has been a year and a half plus discussion we've been having with them and we've, we've.
So it really just.
At some point, you gotta say, this is where we get.
Can we, Adam's here representing Sugar Creek. Do you mind speaking on their behalf, so we don't have to?
Thank you. I'm Adam Lusker on behalf of Sugar Creek backing in Frontenac. I got involved in Sugar Creek when I was still in the Kansas Legislature in regard to wastewater, so I'm pretty familiar with this. But I'm no engineer, so I'm not detailed in, in my knowledge. But we've been working with the city of Pittsburgh. Obviously, I think you all know that City of Pittsburgh provides us water and takes our wastewater, which we produce quite a bit of it due to wash down, the, the processing that we do in manufacturing bacon. Our future goals are, is to build a, a ready-to-eat facility, similar to one we have in Indiana right now, here in the Midwest. We'd love to build it in Crawford County and near our plant now. So that's gonna require more water and more wastewater. So we've been in talks with the city of Frontenac and the city of Pittsburgh for quite a while. I think the city of Pittsburgh's provided that service to us for thirty-some years. We've been in, in Frontenac for over forty years, so, and you can speak to that, Matt. But anyway, we've, we've had ongoing talks for, like Matt said, more than eighteen months. And with the COVID-nineteen breakout in March, we kind of, I don't know where that went. Our last meeting with the city of Pittsburgh, Sugar Creek's last meeting with the city of Pittsburgh in Frontenac, was in Frontenac and with Kansas Department of Health and Environment back, I think, in February. And that's the last meeting we've had. So we are continuing to get our outputs to, to the city, so you guys can build to fit. And that's, that's where we're at. And we, we wanna build here and, and we wanna be a good neighbor, so that's, that's where we're at. Thank you. Thanks for having me. If there's any questions I can answer, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Adam.
The, the new plant is, is estimated to have twice the capacity of the existing plant. We anticipate accommodating growth at Sugar Creek. That's one of the major reasons we're thinking about building it.
Questions? So how much actually is Frontenac, are they gonna kick in on this or is Sugar Creek gonna do it on their behalf?
I think so.
Are we trying?
We are. Well, yeah, we've been talking to them for two years. But, I mean, Frontenac is its own community. They've got their own decisions to make. They have their own budget. We've included them in the original expanded PER. We have a great working relationship with them right now. They are aware that we're gonna have to move forward with the design of this, whether they're in or not. And so we'll, we'll expect them to weigh in on it and give us a decision in plenty of time before construction starts. And quite frankly, I think the sixty days that Matt was referring to is, is probably the window when we're gonna need to have a go-no-go from them. So, yeah, I don't think it'd be anything more we'd say about how Frontenac's gonna approach it. I know they're looking at it and we're in constant communication with them.
Well, should the sixty days be a go-no-go and go ahead and make it a sixty-day period then? Because you've been talking to them for two years and that's quite a while to be talking to somebody and not getting any results.
And that's what it is.
They've been, they've been informed that if this is approved today.
Then the sixty-day clock starts.
Starts from today.
They've gotta do something also, don't they, to the lagoons by the state requirement?
Every, everybody in Kansas has gotta do something. And Frontenac right now has a different system than we have. And I think they've been in discussions with Sugar Creek about possibly how they could use their lagoons in the future. Sugar Creek has a plan that they'd like to see. Frontenac obviously has their own challenges and opportunities that they're considering. And we are just trying to be a solution that meets as many of those challenges as we can. So, yeah, they, they definitely, the clock's ticking on everybody, Chuck.
And we're not, we're going to have a design of a new wastewater treatment plant, whether or not Frontenac participates. It'll involve Sugar Creek, absolutely will involve Sugar Creek. And frankly, the, the actual flow from, from Frontenac is not a major design decision for us. It's relatively small for, for, it's not a major design. Speaking for the engineer, sorry. That's what he said, that's what Pete said.
It's true. I mean, you're looking at a difference between a five M G D plant, five million gallons a day versus a five-point-three million gallons a day plant. So you're not looking at a big percentage-wise increase. However, it's a, it, it helps as you tie Sugar Creek together. It actually helps Frontenac and Sugar Creek. It, it makes sense, but like Darren said, that's their decision, so.
Could you just share your experience with building wastewater treatment plants?
Actually, we're in the process of, we just designed City Liberal, which is twenty-two thousand people, almost the exact same as Pittsburgh. And they're about one year into the construction of that project. We've done numerous smaller projects, but that's the one very similar to the size that we're going to be doing here.
Are you on budget and on time?
We are, actually, even though some things have happened. The corner rise that really didn't affect the construction because we continued on. However, their foreman had a heart attack over Christmas. And, and so that put a delay on us, but they were able to make up time, just due to the weather. They, they worked through weekends and so on to get caught back up on the concrete boards and so on. So they are on time, the budget, they actually came in below our original budget. And to date, we've had the change orders, that's a, the project is thirty-one million. And the change orders to date, after one year, is less than fifty thousand.
I don't have any questions about the project, but I just wanna point out that at the bottom of every page in this contract, these contracts are evidently written by the National Society of Professional Engineering. I think that's curious, questionable, something. I don't know. It, it may just be fine, it may be fine and dandy, but I think it's important to point out.
Yeah, there's actually four organizations that put together that E J.
Yeah, I see the different.
Yeah, there, there's four different professional organizations. And, and it's very similar to an architectural contract that you would have, that's called an A I, Architectural Institute contract that you would have. So like when this building was built and the fire station, the, the agreement that you had in place with, the architect would have been an A I A agreement, because he drove it and the civil engineer worked for them. It, it's backwards in this one. Civil engineer drives it, he'll have an architect who's running it.
I understand.
Through that agreement, yes, you would think it would lean itself towards, but we don't.
They're in line.
We don't have a.
They're in line, Mike.
Right. It would lean itself towards the civil engineers' side, but it's put together by four, four different organizations and it's been going on for years to protect the owners' rights as well. And then that's where, as a staff, Jay and Dr. Bailey and Chris and myself and, and we spent way too many hours in a conference room and way too many different reviews. But we've, we've spent days going through.
Was Henry in there also?
Yes, Henry has reviewed the contracts as well, and incorporating his comments, going through. I mean, if you go through the contract itself, you, you have the contract itself and you have all the exhibits to, to discuss specific items of the contract that goes through that and what, what works in both our favors to make a new.
So that just provides a foundation.
Basically, it's a template. It's a boilerplate template that you start with and there's, and that, that's just your starting point for that.
And, and there were quite a number of changes made to the basic template.
Thank you.
And don't, and don't underestimate, I think I mentioned this the other day, but we're only gonna build one of these about every seventy years. So the, the fact that we get Dr. Bailey, who is, everybody recognizes the level of respect that he has. He's currently just been reappointed to the Kansas Water Authority by the governor. He's designed, I don't know how many of these plans or his firms have. Pete's done this several times. We have Cameron, who's, who is actually an engineer, as our Public Works Director. This is a great team that we have in the city and they reached out to a couple of other people who have made sure that we got this right. Although this is a small amount, when you look at the construction piece, which when that contract's in front of you, we're probably gonna spend the day in here going through stuff. But it's very important. We took it extremely seriously and I think we've, I'm confident we've got a, a very good product and one that fits the, the size and the scope of what we're trying to do here in Pittsburgh.
I know it took me a couple of days, a couple of readings just to even get, make sense of the contract, so.
Any other questions?
I have one last one. Jay, maybe you can help me. Thirty-five to forty million, big span. When everything I was seeing before was around thirty-five, so.
Yeah, that, that's, until we design it, we won't know. And the design will, does it include Frontenac? Does it include, you know, how much of Sugar Creek is it going to do? It's simply that is, there is a, a range that we have to stick with. We just cannot tell you for sure how it's gonna be.
So ladies and gentlemen, a positive vote on this is a commitment to a new wastewater plant. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
I will second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're on our way. Thank you.
And Jamie's retiring. Larissa's in trouble.
All right, our final item, grant agreement. Kansas Department of Commerce considers staff recommendation to enter into a grant agreement with, agreement with the Kansas Department of Commerce in which the Kansas Department of Commerce will provide the city a grant in a total sum of one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred through the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Response Stimulant Supplement, sorry. Supplement administered by the Kansas Department of Commerce with funds allocated from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act.
About a month ago, you graciously had a special session so that we could actually formally get approval to apply for this grant. We, we did. We were successful in, in receiving this grant. Didn't get all the money we asked for, but neither did anyone. But what, once we did, were successfully able to make the application, the state, you know, had made, went through its process of selection and, and allocation of the funds, which, which it has done. We received our grant allocation for one hundred and seventy thousand. And, and then we're ready to, we, we have to, to finalize this, we had to actually formally approve the contract with, with the state. contract with, with the State Department of Commerce, and that, that's all this is. This is approving the actual agreement with the Department of Commerce for the grant that we applied for.
And you're comfortable with the reporting requirements?
Yes, the grant does allow you to hire an administrator who is experienced in these areas, and we, we've done that. We have, we've done that, and it's included in the grant funds.
Any questions?
So if this all goes through, when, people are asking when are they going to be able to apply for?
We are, we are meeting tomorrow with, with a group we've put together to do the screening of the applications. We're going to decide on the application format, we're going to decide on the process, we're going to decide on the criteria that we're going to use. We expect all that to be done in, in July, probably by mid-July. So we expect this, we will, you'll hear some announcements of the program being initiated in, in July.
So if they live in the city, they can, and they have a business, they can apply for this, but if they're in the county, the county has money also.
It does. The county was also awarded money under the same program as was the city of Gerard. So there is, there are funds available if you're not a resident of Pittsburgh, or a business that's in Pittsburgh.
Mid-July, then.
Mid-July.
Patients.
We feel, we feel comfortable we can get it in there, buddy.
Any other questions for Jay?
Nope.
Entertained a motion to approve the grant agreement.
Approve or make motion to?
I second.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Darren, any department reports, city reports?
Very quickly, so each of you have, in front of you, most of you have several masks, which is good. We have a, a new design for the city employees that we picked up. This is the 2.0 version of masks produced by U.S. Awards, our local company. They are, I think, a little friendlier than the first version. They have a sheen to them, which means they put them under high heat and kind of melted the plastic pieces in there, so it's kind of a shield. It's, it's very protective. It's got the city's logo on it. I wanted to make sure that we recognized U.S. Awards, and they didn't give them to us. We obviously purchased them, and all of our COVID-19 expenses we're tracking, and we will be, we are reimbursable for most of those through money coming from, from the federal government. But I wanted to acknowledge that we are taking it very seriously at the city. We are protecting our employees, and, and all of you commissioners, anybody that meets in our buildings is, is a priority. We've always had masks if you come into City Hall, but this is a nice product, and I wonder, I assume we said something to the U.S. Awards Group for looking out for us. They've done a lot of these for, you know, I believe they're doing one for every student at the University of Missouri. I mean, there's a lot of people that are stepping up and ordering these masks. They're a very high-quality product, and, and please understand that they were produced locally, which I think is a big deal.
Great, thank you to Larissa.
If I can, I just have two, two more things. I just want to be respectful of the commissioners. You know, we had, your husband passed away, your father passed away. It's been a long two weeks. You guys give a lot to this city, and we feel for you, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet. And I wouldn't be remiss, Homer Cole also passed away, which is just a, you know, an icon in Pittsburgh, and it's just been a tough couple of weeks, and we appreciate your service. That's all we've got.
Anyone else?
I've got a request of the city and staff. You do all this, and Matt does all this, work out here on these streets and things, and we come along with the fiber optics people, and we cut the streets open after they've been redone. And they come and the contractor comes along, throws in some AB3 and less, and nothing happens for sometimes months and months, and a couple of them even approaching a year at a time. Can the staff and the city look at putting a cut fee of some kind upfront on some of these costs when they come in and do that, and give them a time limit, a reasonable time limit to come back and fix it properly? If it's asphalt, fix with asphalt within a timeframe that's acceptable, if it's concrete, repair it the way it was? And if they get it done, they get the money back? If not, then the city can keep the money and have somebody else do it?
There, there is. Yeah, we can, there are, there are cut fee examples out there that we can utilize. Some of those from the fiber optic, they come back and put in, they put in rock and they put in some asphalt in some of the squares, and then those just settle out, because once you cut anything, it never is the same ever. Some of the backfills are the city's, sometimes we let those settle out with rock and what gets them wet, and then we're just trying to play catch-up. When it was 2012, we had waterline breaks up. We're poking a hole in Fourth Street as we speak right now because of a rotten waterline. But we, we will look at that, to do that, and I know from the gas standpoint, the city used to do most of the repairs for the gas company cuts. We got away from that because we were so busy that we couldn't keep up with all the cuts that the gas company was there, so their, their contractor, Northern Pipeline, did a lot of those to repair those back. But we've never set forth a timetable for that notification, put those through, but we'll look at that for sure as a, as a possibility to get those. Put back to our standards.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask you questions, kind of off of this. These new developments that we're putting in, are all of these utilities going to be out of the roadway?
We are, yes, we are, we are putting them, so we're going to a 60-foot right-of-way, and then, so we're back on initial 10-foot easement because it was such a curve that they had to make that for the, for the sewer lines to go. But we are, we are requesting that the water sewer is all in front of house, and they are behind the curb. So they still will have the lateral and service connections that will run underneath the road. There's no way to avoid that, but the, the trunk lines will be in front of house.
You used, I'm sorry, you used the word request.
Oh, no, they're, they're doing it.
Okay.
They're doing it.
Required.
Required, okay.
That's, that's my polite word for demand.
I just wanted to make sure that's what it was, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Pretty excited, we're, we're working with BART. We've, we've talked to BART quite a bit. We, Silverback, that was a deal we, we talked about. They wanted to put them in the back of house. We talked about all the utilities in front. Same way with Peyton's Hamlet and a few others. We, we are having those conversations with those developers as they come to town that, for, for a maintenance standpoint of our staff, that helps them as well, that all, that all comes in front of house. Okay, I actually came up here just to remind everyone, we put out a media release today. We got word that we're moving, some things changed around. So we put out a media release today. Dust draw the milling contractor that's going to work for Heckerd. We were trying to do a front-end ad, but it didn't work with the contract times. So we're doing a change. Come tomorrow, we will be milling on Joplin Street between 20th and 10th to fix that asphalt back through those intersections that we repaired and clean all that back up. They will be continuing down. We're going to have them do the 100 block of East Forest. We're going to have them do Joplin between Cleveland and Lindbergh behind the football stadium, get that cleaned back up as they work down, and then they will move into the project south of the hospital that Heckerd will work on. So they're, they're, they had some stuff breaking and everything, and I talked to Pete this morning with Heckerd, and we're going to be able to make that happen. So we, it's kind of short notice, I understand, but that is what is going on over the next couple of days, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Matt.
One more question, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, with, with the less finance and the COVID and everything going on, and we know there's a lot, lot less sales done, but with all this, opportunities in this building going on, I know we've lost a couple of coach people taking different jobs. Is, is there a freeze on that? Because to get all of this stuff going, you're going to have a hard time possibly keeping up with codes.
There's, there's not. There's two vacant.
I know somebody left that I.
There's two vacant building officials.
Okay.
And we have to have one of those.
That's what I was wondering, if there's other work coming on, you need somebody.
Anything that's, I, I don't even know a good way to say it, it's just one of those things. During mowing season, we have to have bodies on mowers. Obviously, the police and fire and some of the staff that's been holding these vacancies. If we thought we didn't have a superior workforce that could make up for losing four or five people, we would be filling what we needed to. We were constantly talking to both chiefs. And so I think we've got a handle on the positions we have to have, we, and those, those positions you're talking about, we have to have one of those positions right now. It's, it's imperative. So we will always keep the minimum service level. We don't want anybody to see it drop, even though it's happening on the backs of some of our employees, a little overtime here and there, but yes, it's a great question, and we are taking it, and we're not just blindly holding every position and stuck with the organization we have left.
Thank you.
Great question.
Anything else?
I have a comment and some questions. I watched the county commission meeting last Friday, and I just want to thank, thank you to Commissioner Tom Moody and Bruce Blair for standing up and looking out for the safety and welfare and health of the citizens of Crawford County. Also would like to thank Community Health Department, the County Health Department, Rebecca Adamson, Michael Engle. What do they do, 700 tests in a couple of days?
I think over five days, we've done almost 1,500.
1,500 tests, that's awesome. I understand our number is now 192. Is there any way to know how many of those 192 came from Sugar Creek?
As, as I understand from Rebecca, that's not something that they're going to report.
Okay, I understand that.
It, it doesn't, at this point, it doesn't really matter.
Yes.
What matters is that the individuals are contacted and instructed on what they need to do to keep them and everyone else safe, and we each need to take personal responsibility for our own safety. So it doesn't, I don't think it really.
So another, my next question is 192 from Crawford County, but was there 350 tested positive, not from, from other areas around, like in Missouri and Oklahoma?
So is your question that, that you're, the information you've heard is that there's over 300 positives out of Sugar Creek?
I thought that, not, not from Sugar Creek, from, that came into Crawford County that was tested. I, I don't know.
Oh, oh, that came to community health because they heard we were testing? I don't think we've had that many, but we have had some other companies request.
And one more question. I listened today, something about a travel ban from Arkansas?
That's, those are through KDHE.
So if they come to work in Crawford County, what happens?
Well, the recommendation is if you go to Arkansas and you come back, you should, if you're not personally responsible in protecting yourself, you should quarantine for 14 days if you've had any exposure. But any employer who has employees from Arkansas, they just need to take precautions as an employer. They need to be doing temperatures, they need to be doing masks and things like that. So we're, you know, we're, we're not a community or a country that's going to stop people at the borders, so.
Right.